Hey, it's Matt Flurry. Catch me on the next Straight Facts, sponsored and supported by BIA Media and Currency ENT.
Straight Facts, back at it again. Sosa on the cut. We have VP.
But I have a very special guest in the building. Former city councillor of Rideau-Vanier, which includes Lower Town, Sandy Hill, and Vanier as well. Actually, as well, he was the Chair of the Ottawa Community Housing Board and the Ottawa Sports Commissioner, Mr. Matthew Flurry in the building.
Hey, glad to join everyone.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
It seems weird to say "in the building", because I go in and out of properties all the time. Never had that kind of, "Hey, Matt's in the house", you know, something special.
Yeah, no, I mean, you've done a lot in the community and you're someone who, you know, I can definitely say you're one of the councillors who are definitely active. You're someone who's on the street and, you know, definitely the wards which you represent definitely have a lot of people who have your respect, which is why you've been in your position for so long.
12 years, you see how the white hair I have?
Well, that's it. Yeah, that's like Obama. Remember Obama had nice black hair, he started and he came out with a gray? So, you know, very similar.
Yeah, I'm a southern pepper, right?
Within a couple of years, it's gonna go nice and back to its original color.
Oh, yeah, well, there is treatment for that. As long as I have hair, right?
Definitely.
That's what matters the most, right?
So you were the youngest city councillor to be elected at the time in 2010. So what kind of things motivated you to kind of decided to take that position? A lot of people at your age at the time were probably more considered and were probably doing a lot of other things. A lot more things, which they were more, I guess, you know, at your age, I was more focused on my personal career, my personal growth. What made you decide to kind of selflessly give yourself to the community like that?
You know what? It sort of happened. It wasn't something that I planned through university and that I basically fell into it. Graduating from the University of Ottawa, I just went to the Olympic Games at the time, working for the Minister of Sport. I saw the inside of politics and was like, "It's no different than you and I. It's no different than us". And I was just like, "Coming back home, done my studying. I'd been working for the city for a while in aquatics. I was working at Pond Recreation Centre." And the politics were heavy. It was a different generation. There was no one around that table at the time that was under 60.
Yeah.
And...
That was a Larry O'Brien era.
Larry O'Brien era, pre-Watson. We seemed to not be able to do anything as a city. Lansdowne was going nowhere. There was no even, I know there's a lot of issues with LRT, I'm not dismissing that, but there was no, we weren't even talking about LRT. You know, so for me, I grew up in Ottawa, I wanted to make a difference.
The 95 was the LRT back then, because that was the only bus that could take you from east to west.
That 95 wasn't bad. That 95 wasn't bad.
That 95 was clutch.
It always worked. It came every three minutes.
No, I gotta say, the 95 After Dark was also another experience, which we'll talk about another time, but if you were ever on that 95...
We can talk about the two if you want.
Oh, geez, man.
That's another one. If you know, you know, right? So can you explain to our audience what your role as a city councillor consisted of?
Sure. So ultimately, a city councillor represents a geographic area. So in my case, the area I represented, because it's, my last day in office was on November 18th, by choice. I didn't seek a fourth term, because I'd been at the table for 12 years. But physically, if you stand at the Château-Laurier, where the Rideau Canal is, I represent everyone, every business, every resident, every student, every, anyone that does business or lives within the Lower Town area, which includes the Byrd Market, Sandy Hill, which includes the university campus, and all of the former city of Vanier. So basically, Beechwood to Celleron to Donald Street. And what a city councillor does, ultimately, it's, there's not a job description other than you have to show up for committees. And committees is things that you're mandated on. So there's a council meeting, so you have to sit at council and vote yes or no, and you have to bring motions, and then on committees. But the job is way beyond that. As we were saying, I'm very, I was always very engaged with folks. I went to events, I participated on social media, I engage with residents throughout, and that's what's, that's what gives you kind of the energy of the work you do, right? Is being engaged, trying to make a difference, understanding the issues. A lot of councillors go to a lot of events, a lot of events that are positive, businesses that are opening, and, you know, but when you get down to some of the most challenging issues in communities, it can be daunting. It can be very heavy.
Yeah, I would imagine. What vision did you have for Rideau-Vanier during your tenure, during that time?
You know, because there's really three distinct communities, it's hard to say that there's, what's the ultimate vision? Ultimately, Rideau-Vanier is where the city of Ottawa started.
Yep.
It's one of the oldest parts of the city. So by the nature of that, there's a number of challenges, right? You think of, just for us, when we grew up, when we went to recreation centres or playing in parks, you know, this, it's not, it's not a new park, it's an old park, right? And old parks need old amenities, so it doesn't meet our needs for young adults, for young families, for seniors. So my goal was to start there, start in making sure that the basics of services were in place. Renewing Main Street, so, you know, redoing Rideau Street, redoing Winter Trail Road was big anchoring. There was a lot of things that were underway, but we weren't able to unlock, right? So, for example, I knew that same.
Okay.
It's a French theatre group, or, you know, I could give the Anglophone, the English example to the Ottawa Art Gallery, which is not an English organisation, but people understand where the Ottawa Art Gallery is. So there wasn't a vision of like, "Hey, I'll do this". It was a common set of objectives that says, wherever you live in Ottawa, you should have access to equal services from a city's point of view. And then recognizing some of the barriers that exist in our area. We have one of the lowest income community, most diverse community. In Vanier, it's known as the Little Lunavut. So we have a lot of residents that come from the north, particularly Inuit, who call Vanier home, but yet we, you know, the services are not organised, they're not coordinated. So, you know, my role was to make sure that recreation services, that Ottawa community housing, that wide range, were a lot more checked in with some of the realities that residents in the community were facing. For example, families living in motels.
Yeah, that's tough.
There's a lot of challenges in the community, and those voices are often forgotten at the bigger table of a rich city. We're a capital city, you know, we're very, we're a wealthy city, yet some of the most challenges, some of the biggest challenges aren't gun violence, they're income days.
Yeah, housing.
They're barriers for young family members to thrive and to achieve their goals. And then you have all the impacts of addictions, mental health, gang matters, which, you know, our issues happen in the Byrd Market on Friday night at 2:00 AM. Well, people, the mics would come to me like tonight and say, "Well, you know, what are you gonna do about gun violence?" It's like, "Well, if you're open to having a deeper conversation as to why that gun violence is happening in the market at 2:00 AM, let's have it."
Yeah.
But then it's on to the next day on the new cycle.
Exactly.
And then, you know, organisations might not be there, school boards aren't adapting. So it gets heavy, right? Like, I'm certainly not delusional about the potential and the opportunities we have in front of us, but for me, after 12 years, I just thought, you know, it's time to pass on, pass on the torch and be as helpful as I can in other capacities in the community.
Now, being able to do all you do, and now also being able to do, being the Commissioner of Sport, what was your first major milestone that you wanted to achieve when you started that role?
So Ottawa Sport Commissioner is a role that is symbolic in many ways, right? You're basically the voice for the sport community in Ottawa. One of the key things that, and you and I chatted about that, was the creation of a non-for-profit organisation called Ottawa Sport Council. And Ottawa Sport Council, so we all play sports, different sports, whatever that is, and we play within organised sports. So these teams relate into clubs, and these clubs relate into sports. And the importance for me was to say, "Okay, as a city, how are we connected with those sports? How is their needs, their aspirations, the goals of each individual sports in Ottawa, how are they connected with the city, and how's the city responsive?" So just creating a leadership role and a sport commissioner, the Ottawa Sport Council began a whole lot of conversation. Like, just about two weekends ago, we were out at the Nippon Sailing Club with sports leaders in Ottawa that run clubs, and we were saying, "How can sports be more inclusive? Where are the barriers?" And it came from an income level, it came from a gender level, it came from an income. So there's a wide range of perspectives, and we are there to equip our clubs locally on removing some of those barriers to access sports. And obviously, the city has lacked sports investment. The city sees itself as a learn-to and a recreation space. So we have all these gyms, we have all these arenas, all these pools, but they only need use. They don't need play. They don't need competitive play. They don't need hosting objectives. You go to, you go to other, even Gatineau, for example. You go to Gatineau, Gatineau has a 50-metre pool, and it has a swimming tower. While they're hosting diving competitions, national diving competitions. In Ottawa, our 50-metre pool is the Nippon Sportsplex, and it's an end-of-life. We're the capital city, so I'm just using that as an example, right? A water sport, and yet we're not meeting some of those objectives. So the sport commissioner role is to have a streamline of conversation. And one of my biggest kind of stamp, if you will, is the city of Ottawa did a master plan for recreation and leisure. And it was important for me to remove or advance two objectives. One was that every new facility that we build meets competitive standards play. So if we're going to build a swimming pool, it's going to be a 50-metre pool.
Okay.
And it's going to be 10 lanes wide, so that we can host.
You can actually host, yeah.
So that locals can grow in the sport and compete in the sport locally. And then the other one was really to say, "Okay, let's have a", so there's the facilities and meeting standards for play, but then the other one is making sure that we stop building the newer facilities in newer parts of town, because the LRT is downtown, because there's hotels. So when we host facilities, like, I think of the University of Ottawa. You know, where I went, like, the University of Ottawa, people went to the University of Ottawa and played in those gyms and those courts and those arenas in the 70s. The University of Ottawa has doubled in size and still have, you know, has 1970s facilities. Yet we have some of the top performing, like, you look at the women's and men's basketball team, you look at the women's soccer, you look at the women rugby.
Basketball team's top 10 in the country right now.
You know, like, there's a lot of performance locally, and we're fortunate that athletes continue to come to the region to compete, but yet, like, our facilities are outdated. So imagine if the city of Ottawa and University of Ottawa, to name an example, were to create a real strong partnership, then the locals, like us who live, could play, and then we could start to see national, international athletes compete in our backyard.
Or like Carlton would do something like, for example, just throwing names out there for basketball, because, you know, most championships...
They stamp the championship every year, right?
I'm just gonna say, probably most championships won in North America for like, you know, major basketball university. And correct, the reigning champs right now as well. Now, I think if they were to, you know, partner up, let's say, with the city and create something like a hoop dome, like what is in Toronto, it's a facility that has tons of different basketball courts, a lot of teams go there for tournaments, as well, it's used for recreation as well, too. That would, I think, be a great idea, because, I mean, one thing, like you spoke about in your ward, a lot of, you know, money's an issue and accessibility's an issue. So if there would be something which would be built and it's able to be like, almost like Boys and Girls Club-like atmosphere, where people can go to, be part of that type of an organisation, a group, I think if there's an outlet or a place for kids to be able to go to, that would be huge, because a lot of the times, in speaking for myself, you know, as someone who's a grown adult, there's no place for me to go play basketball or to go do something recreationally. There is a place called Lavati, which used to have basketball courts, which was great. It took away basketball courts, and then now there's a whole bunch of people who would want to play basketball that now just can't. Now imagine, I'm a 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old. What am I gonna do to have fun? What am I gonna do to play? Because I can't afford to play basketball for the local club, because it costs too much money, or I didn't make the team or whatever, right? Because there's only so many teams. And I think if there was something like that, where people could just go and hone their skills, and there's people who can teach the kids, and it's kind of a place where older people, like, for example, myself, or any of us here, can be the people who can help coach and mentor a group of kids. You know, for example, let's say for each person, there's 10 kids you can mentor. There's, let's say, 10 of us here, that's 100 kids that can be mentored easily. But the issue is, there's no facility or place. The only people who hold the keys that open these gyms, as you know, are the Catholic School Board and the Public School Board. They're the ones that have the majority of the basketball courts available, and that has nothing to do with Carlton, nothing to do with Ottawa U, nothing to do with, you know, the...
And it's complicated. Yeah, it's really complicated when there are four school boards, right?
And not to say that it's on them to open the doors up to everybody. It's just to say that accessibility of these things are tough. I'm sure, I'm preaching to the choir here, I know you know me, and you know this all, but it's just, all that to be said.
Well, you know, you're touching on a point that I think is worth exploring it, which is, we think of politics in the context of, you know, a Donald Trump, or a, you know, us locally on a particular issue. But politics plays out everywhere, and you're raising sport as an example. So think of sport for a second. Hockey gets a lot of facilities and has a lot of money, you know, behind it. Football, soccer.
Yep.
I'll use soccer as a more kind of accessible streamlined...
The World Cup.
The World Cup, sorry, you know, Canada lost, as, "I wanted Croatia to lose today against Japan", but it's another story. But, you know, the reality of sports is that there's a lot of politics, and basketball is complicated, because in Ottawa, the provincial organisation is Ontario Basketball.
Yep.
But then the authority in Ottawa is the Eastern Ontario Basketball Association. But then they have five leagues.
Yep.
And those five leagues were never streamlined. So think about, like, even if there's a, even if there's someone with a dollar in hand wanting to invest, like the Hoop in Toronto, they need to make sure they have the strong local players active. And to do that, you need strong groups like EOBH to really, really, really own in on how many adults, how many teams, how many, how many times can that gym be used for games for play? And they're just not mature enough. So there are, there is politics within the sport, right? Of making sure we enable the capacity, we support it. And I think you're touching on something earlier, which is, our university campus is the way to start in many ways, right? If we could build the right facility for university students, student athletes, then sort of everyone benefits, right? Because then, when there's no school in the summer, boom, you bring it in on weekends. So there's so much opportunity. I see the sport, and whatever sport that it be, basketball, I be anything else, there is just so much opportunity here in Ottawa, and we're a bit too shy in tapping into our potential and really seeing through those massive infrastructure investments.
Because there's a lot of potential in the city.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, like, we have a team like the Blackhawks, who hosted a championship weekend here in Ottawa. You know, I was there as well, very successful weekend, a lot of excitement. It was good to see you Ottawa alumni, Caleb Agata, close out that whole event with a championship elim ending, you know, and he won finals MVP. So that was really good to see a local Ottawa person be able to leave with some hardware like that, even though he's from Burlington, but it's okay. You know, so he's an Ottawa guy at the end of the day, you know what I mean? So, but what I will say is, is that, you know, TD Place is a place that is an older building, where they played in that arena. It's definitely, it's an older building of, you know, in comparison to what a modern-day facility is, but we still were able to do something there. But like you said, you know, we're the nation's capital. We should be able to have, we're the home of the best basketball programme in the entire world, the Carlton Ravens in regards to championships in the last two decades. You know, and look at the products we have, like a Meryl Shayok who came from here and plays in the NBA, right? So I really believe that in the future, it'd be great to see, hopefully collaboratively, people to come together, and I know it's not people like yourself, because you love to see it, but it would be great to see people just, you know, put away egos and come to the table for the better of the youth, because everyone complains every day about the gun violence. Everyone complains every day about the kids up to no good. Everyone complains every day about, "Look at these kids", you know what I mean?
Flip that coin and create spaces and support programming.
Give them an opportunity, give them a chance, you know what I mean? Because if I didn't have a chance to play sport, I wouldn't definitely not be wearing today. You and I would not be sitting right now to have this conversation. Like, that's just a matter of fact, you know what I mean? So Sosa does, he coaches tons of kids, you know what I mean? In your ward, for the Gloucester Giants right here, right? So, and I mean, he's someone that does fantastic work with kids. And if it's not for people like him, who, sport was very important to him, our show here, Straight Facts, Ricky, who was his brother, Beans, rest in peace, he's someone who, we continue this show in his honour, he's someone who coached tons of kids as well, too, right? But he's no longer here, so without him, that's a whole group of kids who aren't gonna be able to get that mentorship, right? And it's not like as if...
There is one boy at the Giants, and I know the dad, sorry, his name escapes me as we're live. He was to go to college, he was a, do you remember? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Tyson, yeah.
So, so...
That was my, yeah, that was a very close...
Yeah, so Tyson as a, you know, as a, an example, right? He's Friday night in Lower Town.
Yep.
They're playing basketball right behind Saint Down School.
Yep, that was...
Not at an indoor facility or anything, but outside.
You know, yeah, we put the group of youth playing outdoor basketball in a very vulnerable environment.
Yep.
But those are the only spaces and courts that are available at that time, and we know what happened, right? Like, Tyson was just at the wrong spot at the wrong time.
He was a great kid.
But he played basketball.
Yep.
Like, he played basketball on Friday night, what's the problem with that? There's no, you know what I mean? We've created a vulnerability because the spaces aren't there. And, you know, I always think about these things in a contextual way. Ottawa celebrated the country's 150th in 2017. Which was a milestone year, when you think about, you know, how far we've gone. And, you know, we're only 36 million as a country, and yet we're respected around the world for a number of reasons. And if you have a chance, as a side note, read David Johnson's book, Trust. It explains why people believe in Canada, and it's based on having trust and faith in our public institutions. But putting that aside for a second, in 2017, we had some of the lowest interest rates in the country, which means that boring money was super cheap.
Yep, what a time to be alive.
And the federal government should have, from my perspective, done a national programme to reinvest in recreation spaces. Remember the Centennial Gym, Centennial Community Centres? It's less obvious in a large city, but when you go into small towns, you see those. Those Centennial Rings and Community Centres. Those are across the country. Those were built in 1967 as part of Canada's 100th. Imagine if we upgraded that era, used the same investments, and did an upgrade, you know, in 2017, then we'd already be five years in play of these facilities. But we didn't do that, and we're relying on ageing infrastructure, or, you know, parents that are willing to pay or able to pay to go into the academic, like, the soccer academies and so on. It's the French in the air to play on the word there, but... No, those academies, right, they're available in some areas, but they're very expensive, and it shouldn't be that way. It should be much more centralised, much more affordable, and it should be, you know, think of, think of repurposing rinks, right? Like, Bernamek Almat here in Vanier. It's a rink, people don't play hockey anymore, you know, I'm an example of that, right? I played, I used to be on the ice eight hours a week plus. There used to be four teams, just in Ottawa-Vanier, per age group, there was four teams in East Ottawa. There's, they can barely put a team together per level. Well, that creates all this time now for allocation. So take the single pad rink, convert it into pickleballs, basketball, whatever it is. So there's ways, even without massive, massive, large facilities, to make it happen.
Could be a purpose. We'll just wrap it up on this, is with a new mayor in town and councillors like you, who do a lot in the community, not coming in, it's easy to understand why, if someone's running for office, a lot of their platform would be around, for example, building 10,000 new homes in the capital, because we do have a housing crisis. But with all of that being said, of course, these things are all things that bring in money. These are all with interest rates and with banks and all the things that it costs. Like, it's good for the economy, because it builds construction, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But what gets lost, I find, is the need for being able to, while all these 10,000 homes are being built, I didn't hear anything about recreational centres, football fields, basketball arenas, community arenas, places where people in the community... Of course, there'll be like amenity places, like outdoor parks, which shut down at 11 o'clock. But, again, for the Tysons of the world who live in Lower Town, for, we're the majority of people who can't afford to buy one of the 10,000 homes at interest rates where they're at right now, to get a townhome for any one of us here, a lot of us here, you know, are first-time homebuyers, because of what the economy is and what interest rates are and what it costs to buy home in this economy, as you know, of course. But what do you think it would take for the next Matthew Flurry, who's a councillor? What do you think it would take from a new mayor to be able to get the prior, to be able to get on their radar, them understanding the importance of investing in the infrastructure around all of these 10,000 homes, which they were so adamant to speak about?
Yeah, when you, I want to come to, and I'll answer your question dead-on after, but I want to come back to, there's a lot of things that are just turnkey in Ottawa. If I go around and ask, "Who believes we need a central, brand-new, state-of-the-art hospital?" Everyone raise their hand.
Hundred percent.
So I'm the opposite. A hospital is sick here. How about I get, I make sure you're not sick? How about I invest to make sure you're eating healthy? You have place to do physical activity. But as a society, we drive to what is, "Well, if I'm sick, I want to make sure that the paramedics can bring me in to..." And that's, that's part of the systems issues, right? Is we think about a system problem in a Band-Aid kind of way, rather than, "Well, what's the source? What's the cause?", and the same around gun violence or whatever, right? So I used a completely different topic, which, you know, when I knock on the door, I ask someone, "Hey, you know what? We got the hospital approved", people say, "Oh, thank you", and then if they were, if we were having a deeper conversation, we could have that conversation, saying, "Well, would you rather us invest in making sure we don't have food banks? Making sure that everyone goes and has access to food, proper food, and spaces, and all that we're talking about?" So, you know, my recollection is two pieces. One is that we're way too hierarchical as a city government, where everyone starts junior, and by the time they're 60, they're managers. But when you're 60, you don't want to change the system. You just want to make sure you, you know, you're leading a big team, you have, you know...
Get your 25 years in a watch.
Yeah, the cities, by the time you're demotivated to do things, you're at the top of the food chain.
Yep.
So that's, it's not the politics, it's the system, that we don't give young voices, we don't give diverse voices, the leadership abilities, the leadership chances to manage these issues. And then the opposite, in my space, it's, there's really, really much more you can do in the community. Like, I've joined boards, right? Like, I'm on the Rideau Winter Trail, I'm on Unic FM, which is a French radio, I'm on Ottawa Sport Council, because I feel like I can be an agent of change through the non-for-profit world, and I've seen it in the political realm, which is, it's not like if we have an idea, like, all these things that are gonna happen, and then we pick priorities, there's a momentum of lobby around things, right? Like, the Ottawa Art Gallery, Lansdowne Park, La Breton, the hospital, and those drive attention, they drive spending, they drive resources. The sport community is not organised that way. So we could easily organise as a sport community, and then you have to be extremely open to say, "Well, you know, there are fundamental sports, there are fundamental spaces that create more sport uses." So you're talking arenas, you're talking pools, you're talking fields, and you're talking gyms. Once you have those four core pillars, I think in Ottawa, you can play 70% of sports. So what happens the day baseball shows up and says, "Well, you invested in those four pillars, but what about me?" And those are tough political conversations. But I think just getting those four pillars in and saying, "We're gonna hyper-invest in those four infrastructure assets", then we start changing the paradigm.
Man, that's amazing.
Well, so we'd like to know, sorry about that.
We went deep in sports.
I like that, I like that.
We'd also like to know more about your position as a Chair of Ottawa Community Housing Board. So what can you tell us about your time there?
So, in my community, there's much, there's some of the, there's the highest number of buildings owned by OCH compared to other wards in the city. So when I was first elected in 2010, right away I joined on the board. Growing up in Lower Town, like, you know, we knew kids that lived in Beau-Solé, Beau-Sejour, friends interacted, like, I worked at the pool, I went to the patro, as I said, like, there's a bunch of, and to me, what happened, yeah, what happened is that you just, you, in large urban centres, you saw these community housings really become like a symbol of issues, right? A symbol of what was going poorly in inner city, in our urban neighbourhoods. So for me, I'm joining the board, and first few years, I got, you have to listen and learn, right? You sort of listen and learn, you get to know the organisation, you get to know where they're spending, and realise quickly, like, "Oh my God, we have a vulnerable population in all fronts, right? We have a lot of newcomers, large families, we have low-income residents, We have a lot of newcomers, large families, we have low-income residents, we have seniors who are aging in our buildings, and then you have addictions, mental health. You know, so, okay, well, those are very different strategies for all of these four priority groups, right?
Each priority.
But we weren't doing anything, we were doing a lot of small interventions. So it's complex in our in our space, but we start to sell properties, and we start to redevelop properties. So we're Ottawa's largest landlord, we have 15,000 units, 32,000 residents who live every night. We're an essential work environment, and our goal is to build 10,000 new units over the next 10 years. And and people say, well, you know, that's a sexy number. There there are two main goals there. One is we know that the affordability issue is is large and larger in Ottawa.
Yeah.
But the other one is our existing portfolios is aging. You have buildings that were built in the 50s. At some point, the building, there's no use for me to change the windows and change the roofs, the building's just not performing.
Yep.
So the best thing we can do is to demolish and rebuild.
Restart, yeah.
And and I'll give you the identity of that. So if if you think of move, like, put yourself at Gladstone and Booth Street. Those were all stacked town, those were all townhouses, there was 16 of them. We, yeah, they weren't performing well, there was rats issues, there was, you know, the the heating and cooling systems weren't working, the roof needed major repairs. So what we did, we demolished, which is tough, right? You take 16 families, you have to relocate 16 families elsewhere in a large portfolio. But within five years, we built an eight-storey building, 146 units, and to heat and cool one two-bedroom units in that building is $100 a year.
So much more efficient.
Yeah, you take, you take those small-scale, you know, townhouses, and you build an apartment building.
Yeah.
And then in that apartment building, not only is it, you know, better spaces, more modern spaces, but we create income diversity.
Yeah.
So we're we're not just putting lower-income residents, we're not just putting a type of demographic, just a a single or just seniors, we're mixing.
You're mixing it up, yeah.
So so that's the community we want, is that diversity, that, so that, you know, younger, lower-income folks can can mix with seniors that aren't necessarily low-income, and then they can interact within generations. So our our biggest focus in coming years is Overbrook. Overbrook has a lot of those red brick townhouses we want to redevelop, and then Foster Farms. So you know where the IKEA is? Like, right across, right across the IKEA where DeMoye Boys and Girls Club is? Want to redevelop those communities. And and our primary goal is if you're a resident there today and you want to come back, as we redevelop, you'll have a first right of refusal at the same price. So we're not moving folks out of the neighbourhood, but there is a period that's challenging as we rebuild.
Just relocating them for a period of time?
Yeah.
So our last question for you is.
All righty.
Our last question for you is, um, so, like many of us here, you have a young family.
I do.
And that means you're probably getting more than 80 hours back a week. So what does that mean, uh, what does that mean to you and and what are you looking forward to most when it comes to life after?
You know, I I'm I'm very happy and proud, I have a five-year-old and we have a a second child coming in in April.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah. And and the first thing as a dad, I'm thinking is, oh, man, I'm gonna miss sleep again. The first year's gonna be tough, but.
That's if you got the first one out of your bed, that is.
Yeah, exactly. No, but you know, I, it it it's only been a few weeks that I'm sort of back to, let's call it more normal life, and going to swimming lessons, you know, waking up and and bringing him to school in the morning, and, you know, playing sock, I, he plays soccer in one of the learning programmes at McAlada now on Saturday mornings, and I'm like that dad with the coffee on the side. I was like, yeah, that's what I want, right? Like, that's the life I want. But, no, you know what, I I'm not the type of person that sits and just, late evening, if I can't sleep, I'll read, but if not, I'm doing something. So I spent a lot of time in political life, you know, debating if we should have Uber or taxis or, you know, debating a number of things at City Hall for the right reasons, right? I I did it from a representation, a young voice for my community and so on, but now I want it.
You still have a young voice.
Yeah, 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 I just have a lot right here. But no, no, I I, you know, the reality is, I just want to spend my time differently, but to help in the same way.
Yeah.
Just not in elected office for now. Like, I I want to come back to politics, it's in my blood, I, it is an agent of change. Like, politics is not the sour thing that we think it is, it is an ability for us to change the world we live in.
Yep.
And if we don't engage with politics, that's when the world, that we don't want that world, right? Because it's not working for us. So the more we see those tension points, the more it's engagement. So, you know, if I leave, today it's a conversation on, you know, as a parent, join a volunteer board for for your 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 kid's football programme or basketball programme, whatever it is, try to make a difference. It starts there, right? The real difference starts in those schools, it starts in those sports programmes, it starts in those community groups, and then you build momentum, and then you start to see change, right? And when we can't see change, or if we despair on change, that's when, as a strong community, we lose sight of who we are and and where we want to go. And, you know, I I leave politics with a lot of hope for.
Thank you so much for taking the time to be on our show. Appreciate it.